We're called the workshop, our mission workshop is water. And the purpose of this workshop tonight is to review and we tend to approve tonight and prove at the, I mean.
We have the first reading of the ordinance tonight advertised and have the second reading of the ordinance for a second review tonight, if you see.
From the workshop, what we can do is make a recommendation for this to appear in our review meeting later on this evening. That's.
Correct. And this Diana Stewart's here with Royal Water, she's going to go over the rate studies you did.
Okay.
This would have been in the budget, but somehow emails, I didn't even get it, you know, so I didn't have it.
Okay.
To go from that to prepare, but you have an immediate budget off of the water system on you in your packets or in here.
Okay. Why don't we, why don't we let Ms. Stewart do her first?
Yes, I think, yes.
Thanks for attending, or does she need to appear to our later meeting?
No, she's going to do it, you're going to workshop.
Ms. Stewart, would you like to go first?
Time for him.
Then if you need to go to Tallahassee or wherever this is.
That goes to Monticello.
Monticello.
Yeah, I was going to say Monticello tonight, but I'll get back to St. Augustine later on this week.
All right, well, thank you for being here.
You're welcome, thank you for having me. So, a few months ago, y'all approved a asset management plan and you signed that into a resolution. This was supposed to have been attached to that and we had a clause in there that we would get this later because there were some discrepancies that we were finding with some of your revenues. We were able to get all that put together and so that's why we're here today to present that to you. And if you will, I'm just going to go through the pages so you'll know where we're at. But this rate scenario is looking at the fact that you took in the grant monies that were provided to you at $30,000 to cover your deficit that you had for this fiscal year of $25,000, a little over $25,000. We're also going to be looking at or applying the asset management costs that you need to be putting back every year to do proper maintenance on all of your assets in the system. Now that is, everybody kind of freaks out about that, but don't yet because we worked it out a little bit to where it won't be such a big number. We did look at that and that number is about $60,000 a year that you need to be putting into a reserve and putting back into your system every year to maintain what you currently have. This is not including any new infrastructure that's coming in or things that have not been found in the system, okay? This is just currently what we have located and collected and put into your Diamond Maps account. That $60,000, we knew that that was going to be a really big hit to the system. So, we, we're not putting that in immediately, but we are going to gradually build it up and over the next 10 years be at that number. Okay? We've also taken into consideration here the customer price or consumer price index. Right now, it's pretty high. For 23, we're looking at 9.1% interest, so you'll, you'll see this on the escalation factor. And then we're estimating that it'll be about 5% moving forward. If any of those change, that information changes, if it actually does go up higher than the 5%, then the suggested increases underneath here will also have to go up with that. Now, don't dwell on these, I know these numbers look hard and they are hard. Right now, you are at a deficit, your water is not supporting itself. And we'll, I'll show you that through here, but I am suggesting that there needs to be a 35% increase and that's just going to get you to break even for next year. And we'll flip, if you'll flip to the next page, this will become a little bit clearer here. So, as you see here, in 22, you did have a deficit of $25,000. And with the 35% increase, it's only going to give you about $3,000 next year to the good, but it will keep you from going negative. If you go less than 35, you're looking at a negative balance again next year.
I'm being dumb now.
No.
How do you come up with that figure? How, how, how?
So, we're looking at your debt, your operating expenses, what your budget is, and then any capital projects that you have, which includes the O and M. And those are the numbers that we have in there right now and you see each year is estimated what those expenses would be. And hopefully with the increases we've suggested, it'll continue to go on. Now, you see in 26 and 27, we are showing another deficit. This is showing that you would have to borrow from reserve now, so don't, you know, that you will have, you will have reserve if you make this 35% increase, you will have reserve to be able to cover these deficits. So, it won't hurt you as hard. On the next, on page four is a graph, so you have a little better visual of what we were just talking about. You can see all of the columns, these are your debt. This includes your operating expenses, your debt, and your capital projects, including the asset management R and R.
So, you're saying now, I'm, I'm, I'll be quiet.
No, you ask any question you need to.
How would, why is it would be a deficit, what would be the reason of that?
Because you're not bringing enough revenue in to support your expenses.
Only way to help that is to go up on water bills, is that correct?
Or find some other source of revenue. But yeah, for this, water bills is what you have.
That wouldn't go good.
I was going to say, there's no grant funding, no, there's no grant funding available to cover your operating expenses. You can't get grants, you have to raise your rates to be able to cover that. And if you look at the red line here, this is where your existing rates are. So, you see how far under you are by that red line. The gray line is what we're suggesting, where you will be if you raise the rates that we're suggesting here. Now, just so you're aware, the only rates I'm suggesting tonight is that first year. We will relook at this next year, maybe you'll be in a better place. We'll reevaluate it to see, do we need to go up the next tier? Or if we can maybe not go up as much next year in '24.
Something like John, now what, without looking down and finding something that just popped up the page for that number, what, what did you base your deficit on? And in '28, we're, we're right back looking at the chart. Is that, are those increases in water sales or decreases in water sales?
So.
Something, something happened.
Right, so all of this, these numbers down here are taking into consideration the rate increases that I'm suggesting. So, if you do not make these rate increases, you're not looking at that red line, so you're going to have a deficit every year. That, and you can see that deficit up here where it says existing rate sufficiencies. This would be what you will be doing if you do not make rate increases. And that's a deficit every year, that will only increase.
Yeah, okay, I think, I think I understand that if we don't do something, there will become deficits. But what happens in year five and six that, or four and five from now, that that makes it to?
Negative 13.
We've got a negative 13 and negative 27.
Right, okay, so.
Something has to happen there because if we're still saying save instead of water and we still got the rates increasing by projected amounts.
Yes.
We're not staying ahead.
Right, what you, if you look at the graph, on the graph, you'll see that your capital has gone up there. Now, and that's why I said I want you just to focus on 23 because 26 and 27 currently has capital projects that you have and that is showing that it's coming out of your revenue. We're going to work to try and see if we can find a grant. Now, you already have a grant, I was told yesterday, established, it's going to cover that project in 26. But the project that's going, the line going from your elevated storage tank to 70, is it 71 or 77?
71, 70.
Where the new line, where FDUT's putting the new line in, that needs to be increased from a six inch now to a 10 inch. So, that project is something we're going to try and help you find some funding for. It may need to be a loan through SRF, that's why this is important because they're not, you know, nobody's going to loan you money if your rates aren't where they need to be. But on the other side of that too, if we can find grants available, we're going to search to try and find a grant for you as well to eliminate that if we can.
So, that, that does or does not happen depending on, well, no, we have a capital expenditure that comes out of the CEDs.
What, if it doesn't happen, if we cannot find a grant for you, this is what you're looking at. So, this is a worst case scenario.
What if the capital expenditure doesn't happen?
If the capital expenditure doesn't happen, then it come, this comes down, your expenditures will come down. And that's, that's why I said, we will look each year at this and see where y'all will be at. Right now, this is a worst case scenario for 26 and 27, but I'm pretty certain that this won't be a deficit in that year.
Okay.
Okay. And we can skip five because it basically just repeats three. But page six, this is what your unrestricted reserve will look like, all right, with the increases. And if you'll look at the top tier there where it has 26, too, this is what you're expected to have at the end of this year due to the fact that you took that ARPA funding of $30,000 to put in to cover your deficit. So, you're going to be able to have about 26 in your reserve this year. And we look for that to increase each year, moving forward with the rates that we've suggested. The graph down here at the bottom, you can see that the top red line, this is at 270 days of operating expenses. And this is something that DEP suggests, okay, that you meet 270 days. We know that not everybody can do that, but it is strongly recommended that you always have 90 days of reserve in the bank. So, if something catastrophic were to happen, you'd have, you'd be able to support yourself for at least 90 days without having any revenues coming in, all right? So, you can see here that for 22 and 23, you're not reaching that 90 day, but you should be able to with these rate increases moving forward, maintain that 90 days. And as I said, year 27 will not be that low. Seven, this is just reviewing your capital improvement plan. And so, these are those capital projects that we were just talking about and you can see in 26 and 27, the amounts that's expected for those projects for your well two, which is $55,000. That is now a grant, so that number right there goes away. And then we still have the 67.3 that is anticipated for the water line upgrade. Page eight, this is just identifying your debt that you have with USDA. Of course, we want to make sure that we're always meeting that. And currently, that is the only debt that you have. Page nine, this is just basically your budget and this is applying the CPI each year. So, you can help budget. It tells you what your budget needs to be each year based on what you currently have. And, you know, if there was any new projects come, come up that we need to add in here, we can do that. But this is just basically based on your current budget as of 22, what items are on there. Now, page 10, this is for 5,000 gallons, keep that in mind, okay? If your residential customers were to use 5,000 gallons, this is what that 35% would be taking them up to. So, they currently are paying 53, 35, and it would go up to 72.
What's, what, Margaret, what's the average gallons for, in average, what?
Most households like yours are, I would say probably 50% of our residents use the 2,500 or less gallons. That bill would go up about $11.26 a month when water and then add the garbage to it, you know? But you'd have about $11 increase per month on the base rate. And, you know.
And the next page shows that.
Yeah, like Christie went up, everything went up, you know? And we just haven't went up.
Do we, do we distinguish between in-city users and out-of?
Yeah, if you look on that page.
The next page breaks that down for you.
Did we, did we not, a number of years ago, when we were having to do this every, every year or two go up? Didn't we, didn't we act so that every year we would automatically go up?
The minimum of the CPI.
And we have done that.
We have done that, but we haven't, we get our CPI, we've been up like 1.2%, some of that. And then this year, the jump and that, we didn't anticipate the inflation rate in the past year. But we didn't have knowledge of it, to know that what CPI was actually was.
Should, should we not, uh, should we not say that we're going to, could we not act an ordinance or something and say that we want to go up 5% or 10% a year? And, and rather than say tied to the CPI, I'm like, yeah, we can just say.
I think our ordinance said.
The reason we did that was because every year we raised the order and we needed to and we had to. And then we faced people coming this way, it just, it just happened and it's less noticeable. Not that we're trying to hide it, but it's, it's less noticeable and maybe less painful. And what you're saying may, may be what you're trying to lead us into doing. I'm getting this first year.
It's going to be.
That's going to be.
That's going to be the hard.
Cold water in the face.
Yes, yeah. Sadly.
But you know, everybody's got cold water in the face with electric bills.
No, but in a ten.
Yeah, and, and the gas clubs and everything else, you know, I said, that's just as hard as.
Yeah, so most everybody's water bill go with about $10, $11.
$10 or $11, yes.
Yes, sir.
That's not bad, I believe, if you think about it.
And, you know, the, the problem is, is like the CPI last year was probably around 3%. This year, it's more in the eight, nine to eight percent range. Last month, I mean, right now, it's at 8.3. Last month, it was 6.5, month before that was 9.1. We're starting to see it come down a little bit, but it's not near where it was this time last year. And if the CPI was 3% and you only raised it 1%,
Yeah, we didn't raise enough last year.
So, it, it's kind of put y'all behind because we're not, you weren't quite making that's what the actual CPI was for the year.
I didn't remember that, we had tied the CPI up, I'm sure we did.
We put, because our resolution says that we will raise the rates each year to the minimum of CPI. I remember my increase, uh, release the CPI each year.
So, that didn't really add up, Margaret, to about 50, 75 cents a month?
Like, this year, everybody would talk about less than 50 cents a month, you know? And it don't, that don't help us, you know?
So, we're going to go from 50 cents a month to $11.
$11, yeah. We already have problems with someone paying $110, $69 a month, you know?
I know, and, and I, and I've worked every way I could to try and keep it as low as I could.
We worked hours yesterday, we had 25% to gain.
We appreciate that and it's a, it's a surprise to us probably, but we appreciate that. And, and what we need to remember is we just kind of did the same thing with the ordinance last month where we renewed that. And we took, that contract had a minimum and that was by the contract, so they expected the minimum. But we took away the CPI, so if it stays up high, we took away the, we took away the maximum, we took away the maximum they could pay. So, if that CPI stays up, if people know what predicted it came down, if that CPI stays up, that market feels will stay up or go up.
Yes.
And go up.
And garbage was not calculated into this, this is strictly water, so the garbage, yeah, was not calculated. But when I looked at garbage, the numbers that I had, it looked like your expenses were higher than what your garbage revenue was coming in at the time. So, that, if you raised it, that's a good thing, because you needed to.
So, right here, it says 4501, 6500 gallons, it would go up 569, is that what?
Yes, sir, so if, if they use 2,500 gallons, they're going to pay 375 per thousand gallons.
Oh, I see, I see. And if we use 4500, it's 45 per thousand, right?
Yes, you'll, you'll, you'll still be at that first tier. So, for the first 2,500, you'll pay 375 per thousand, but then if you go over 2,500, the next, or actually, I'm in the wrong place.
20, 23.
Yes, it's 37, I'm sorry, say 375 for the first 2,500, right? And then it'll go up to 45 per thousand the next year, and they go over 2,500.
The minimum water bill with garbage and everything else is at at least $60, you know?
With the new, with the new, what is it now?
53, 54.
53, 53, 98.
It might have been, I must, I must be, that's about what I think, about 55.
Yeah, you pay a little more, you know?
That's just for the two purposes.
Yeah.
It's easier, about cheaply, but.
My, I was going to say, I paid about 68, you know?
68?
About 78, yeah.
Mine running dry right here. Are you on page 11, and I think that's what we're looking now on, or are you?
Uh, yes, sir.
Have we finished 10?
Yeah, we finished 10 and page 11 is just showing you what the new rates would be. 22 is what your existing rates are, 23 is where they would be with the 35% increase.
That's really, that's really about all we're going to have to struggle with is that one year.
Yeah, one year.
Because from, from there to eight years later, we only go up $4. That's not even a dollar a year. Hardly noticeable, hardly noticeable, assuming this.
I go.
In a perfect world.
Yeah, you might have a cup of coffee, oh.
Well, you know, you just got in the lettering with your light bill, your utility bill, a couple of months ago, that was Royal Electric's increased the rates, you know? Everybody's increased because they had to.
Yeah.
Well, we get more money, people make more money in the working world, I've heard. And even social security does, we fix and get a big raise.
Yeah, they're taking more bills.
You know, I mean.
We are.
Yes, we are.
Yeah, we are, but it don't start till next January, so, I mean.
But CPI's at 9%, so you're just probably going to break even, right?
I get back with you on that big raise.
I don't know about that.
Yeah.
Preachers hit a raise, they raised preachers rates every year, they got their budget and all.
Don't you worry, Dale. I've gotten one in nine years.
Well, it must have been a big one then.
It was.
Well, it was pretty, it was pretty.
But I'm doing nothing this year.
Yeah.
So, the, the last two pages of this document is basically just showing you what your revenues are, your existing revenues are based on the number of customers you have and what your current rates are. So, that just balances out to show you that you're only making about $135,000 currently each year in water.
And I think we all knew this was coming, you know, with, with the price of gas, the price of fuel, the price of, what it costs to produce a gallon of water now, you know, the chlorine, the, we are.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, and I don't know if y'all got hit as bad, but a lot of, a lot of systems, their chlorine went up 100%.
Ours is up against 30.
So, you know, things really jumped this last year.
It's probably been 20 years ago or so, we, uh, I had a brother that lived outside the city and he put in a well way back and did it before the town was even incorporated, before we had a, he had a well and. And if you count lightning strikes, waterlogged, pumps, changes and things like that, I can, I can, I could have bought, at that time, I could have bought like 18 years of municipal water, what it take to put down a well and a tank. And then all, in that 18 years, how many times would I have to replace that pump? It froze up and broke lines and things like that. Here, all I got to do is call Margaret.
Wait for her word.
Wait for her word to come back.
That's right. Marcy lives in Sunny Hills and she said her water, because her water is $97 a month. That's on the food and sewer and garbage and all, I think they pay garbage loads many, but.
And the good thing about city water is if the lights go out, you still have water, and lighter than your level.
Yeah.
So, that's a good thing, I always wish that.
Yep.
And even if lights go down here, they're, they're going to have to be out a long, long time before we could have water. Look, hopefully they'll back up generators and all of that, I may not have life, but I'm.
I can come for.
Cold showers.
Yeah.
So, that is, that's what I have for you. If you have any questions or if you need me to stay around for the public, I will be happy to.
You see what's going to be here.
Okay.
Maybe she'll be here.
Okay, so.
Anybody have a question for Ms. Stewart? We appreciate you, Cam, and we appreciate the thanks that Royal Water does for us. I believe this is the first time we've had anything like this.
We had a rate study years ago.
A rate study, but.
But the.
Asset management plan.
No, and you ought to see the demonstration on the diamond maps. If, if she stays around and we get through this budget, I'm going to let her demonstrate those diamond maps to you, the capabilities that we have in the office and what we have in the field now.
Good, good, good. And that's good, and I would just, I would want to thank you for the other thing that Royal Water does for us. The guys that come out, helping us locate knives and things like that, just in our general maintenance and general things like that. We appreciate you doing that.
Glad to be helping.
All right. Anyone have a question for Ms. Stewart?
When this is right, you take a bite?
Ma'am?
Uh, October 1.
I was going to say, you need to take a bite, October 1.
You won't get a wheel on until another April 1. Another April 1, we'll be allowed for October.
And it won't be noticeable, could we?
You can wait up until February. We got to be late, we got to repost up for later this year.
I think we're going to earn our money this month.
Yeah. Don't just say January.
And I was going to say, I would definitely not suggest any later than January because you will be losing three months of revenue. You know, that's protected.
That kid.
But, but yeah.
We have to, we have to endure the bad long, enjoy the good, don't we?
It's all people forgotten, Margaret.
That's right.
And this is your contact information when we look at this, if we need to call somebody or?
Yeah, well, actually, she has my cell phone, which would be a better way. This is, this goes to the Tallahassee office, which they'll refer you to me as well if you need, you know, if you need to, just ask for me. But she has my direct number.
I think calling, isn't that horrible, hitting me up dead, but. Okay, you're, you're welcome to stay with us.
I was going to say, you want me to stay around?
You want her to give a quick demonstration of her diamond maps while she's here before, we got an hour to.
Why not do a demonstration?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, would you please?
See, I throw something on you, Diane. This is amazing to us, though.
Now, is this where they can actually, our maintenance can go out?
They'll actually see the lines and they'll work.
They have something in their awareness. They can turn on their GPS and get the GPS coordinates of where they're at.
Well, that sounds great to me.
Is that an old cell phone, I mean, I don't know if that you find, but.
I don't know.
This thing, this thing with Tyler Erickson, that was amazing to me. They found him, that GPS is his on hole six of the golf course, that's where they, they found him.
He's 17 years old, so I don't know what it's about.
Thank you.
So, apologize that I don't have another screen. So, can y'all see this, okay, to see your maps and all that? So, this is the information that we've collected for you.
It's not it.
Okay, well, it was there.
It was there.
Pretty good.
All right.
Can we get? So, that is, that is your entire system, that's got your lines in there, the hydrants, your water valves. Everything is turned on at this moment, so you can see the legend.
Yeah.
Just spin it, spin it around, I'll just spin it around as I, as I talk to, to show it to you.
I see, I see open cord up there, yeah.
You have the ability to, of course, you know, to turn these features off and then turn each of them on one at a time so you can see what you're looking at, and I'll, let me turn it, so there's all the hydrants that we currently have collected. Now, the good thing about this and what they can do is it helps track, it does work orders, but it allows them to update while they're out in the field. So, when they go out and exercise a valve, we know when it was done and if they replace anything, they can update it in here to tell, you know, to identify when it was replaced. So, that way, it helps you keep track of what, what assets you have in your system. And it gives them a way of pulling reports to identify what assets do you have currently that are going to be past their design life in the next year. All right, so you can then budget appropriately for that to say, okay, we've got 10 valves that are. All right, so you can then budget appropriately for that, to say, okay, we've got ten valves that are past their design life, we need a budget to replace those next year. All right, so I'll show you.
All right.
We do. And Dallas and Tim, uh, they're gonna show them how to go back and put our meters in on this map.
Oh.
So this is what we call the attribute information, and it basically is all of the information associated with that particular asset, and in this case, this hydrant that we're looking at. And as I was talking about, uh, setting the condition, we can't see my cursors. This section down here is the asset management portion. That based on the design life of the asset, the date it was installed, it generates these numbers to say, okay, based on its age, this is when it's gonna be at its end of life. But based on the condition, it may give you an extended life for that, if it's still in good condition. And that's why it's important to go out and exercise these annually, and do assessments annually. Some other quick things that this can do, um, she was talking about identifying elevation and the location. So just with the click of the button, we had someone called yesterday needing to know what his coordinates were with his prison, for the prison. So we were able to locate him, just click it, click on the map where he was at, and it gives us his GPS locations, or his light longs, coordinates. Um, other things that you can do here is you need to know the elevation. So, again, this may not just be for water, this may be for other departments that you have. But just by clicking, you can see what the elevation is in that area. If everything's flowing downhill, or you got things going uphill, you know, what, what do we need to do? This does so much more that I'm not gonna try and overwhelm you with the night, because we'll be here like we were yesterday all day. But, uh, you know, at any point in time, if you want, you know, to go through it step by step, I will be more than happy to come back, but I won't.
So what assets are on there now? Fire hydrants.
You have fire hydrants, we have your valves, we have your water lines drawn in, uh, we have everything at the plant. So motors, wells, pumps, um, your generators should be on there, your electrical panels. Hopefully, we have all of your assets that we could visibly find and see. Um, if there's something that may have been buried, and, or nobody knows where it's at, we may not have that on here.
But Tim announced how they built it to draw it, and they found it.
So if they find it, they can.
I know, I tried my best, and we had, exactly that, we had some, we had some lines that were not deactivated. Uh, and we had, we had some somewhere in the middle, kind of, they were both flowing, and then they were flowing to each other, between each other, something like that. We dug up one, and dug up one, and dug up one, and I deleted it, and dug up one, and put it in a parallel tour or something, kind of thing, that got down in the vault, if you remember that. Took us like a week just to find.
And that's what the wonderful thing is about this, because as soon as you find it, you can adjust it on here, and you don't have to worry about waiting a year to have your maps printed out, it's right here. Everybody has access to it, and they see it as soon as you change it, everybody sees the new change.
Did you take that off of our, if we were, blue crate and pour?
Actually, we, we physically went out and collected everything.
George, uh, George Glover, he stayed here, called over, with Dallas and Tim, Max and Tim, mapping his system out.
No, he did, he did draw the lines based on maps, because, well, actually, he did it based on the experience of, um, your staff, because they sat down together and drew the lines in. So, the lines, as we discussed yesterday, may need to have some adjustments as they're digging, because we can't dig up the lines while we're out here, you know, to make sure, oh, that's where they're at. But based on the fact that the, the valves are GPS, we're, you know, pretty close, we're pretty close. We may miss it some nineties.
Or a regular valve, you know, to, we need to.
Early December, could we say that the council has been able to, uh, generate, secure a map, that's what I was saying. We, we take credit for this, Tim.
You can do what?
Take credit for it.
Oh, sure.
She's political, Greg.
Because you have.
I see, I hear the law.
No, you did, you actually did. This is, this is your program now, you have this program, and.
It's on Dallas and Tim's phone, it's on our computers, it's on.
We're, we are only here to assist when you call us at this point. Okay, so they're your maps.
We appreciate that, that had to be a law. That has to be a law.
Now, if it helps you, it was worth, it's worth it, that's what we wanna be able to do, to give y'all something that you need. And this'll be great here in emergency response, too. I like to tell that to people out in Pampam, because y'all seem to have more trouble with emergency response, and it jumps out along the coastline, so. You know, because this can easily be, you know, shared with anybody that's coming in to, to assist with the emergency response.
This'll be good when D O P comes in, like seventy-seven, our lines, you know, like this is where we're at here, you know, y'all need to make sure we're back here.
Yeah, they can use this, this is just like Google Maps, you can navigate to every asset, so if everything's flooded and underwater, we can at least go to where we know it was the last time we, before it flooded.
If it floods here, we're gonna be able to.
And that's good for the fire department.
As well, yes, I was gonna say.
That one, did you, they have a computer that we could put these?
We will have a computer that we will put that on.
Put this on, those, those fire plugs and those fire hydrants in particular. Because I know, for that one or two, that we might have moved theirs, driven it high in the weeds and stuff.
They've been working on it, about.
Yeah, all this data can be exported in, in several different formats that, if the fire department, they don't want their using, we can export it.
Then if you give them a, or if you give them a login, and they don't, they won't be able to go in and make changes, but they can go in and see where everything's at.
Yeah.
Right now, Tim is making changes on it, and, uh, it says full access. Dallas doesn't want full access, because he don't wanna, uh, mess with that phone much, and then Marcy, on Marcy's computer, she's got full access.
I think, I think maybe having fewer to have full access now.
Maybe I don't have.
Because I don't, I don't, I don't want you to change anything, even come to Marcy, another thing, right, is, I don't want them to change it sometimes.
Marcy, Tim's on, come on, come check, Tim in the field, and Marcy, he'll transfer to Marcy here.
Yeah, and you can create as many users you want, only give a few access, so they couldn't edit or do anything, just look at it.
Is that what they have shown now? But the last thing we're, he needed, he was sending him out to work.
I, I, we put it up this morning, we have a little transition on here to break the GPS location, you know.
That's web-based, is that correct?
It is, it is all web-based.
Do you have the ability to track, uh, access? In other words, if, did you track traffic, uh, on, on the site?
No, no, it's not, you're talking about what, if we're Google's concern?
Well.
Like, like Google tracks the traffic?
Yeah, so just so you'd have the ability, this, a number of people accessed it this month, for instance.
Oh, oh, that, that traffic. I was just talking about actual traffic, sorry.
No, no, uh, but I mean, would you be able to tell?
Yeah, well, if they do any edits in here, yes, we can tell. I, we do have the user, we can tell when they logged in last, and you, and you can tell that, too. Um, you, yes, they can see that, to know when they logged in last, but any edits, if they have edit capability, any edits they make, it automatically says who was in here and who did that.
So strictly from a viewer point of view, from a public relations point of view, this might be something, is this something that potentially we could, we could broadcast, and people could go on and at least look at it? Or would that be a detriment?
That, that may be more difficult, um.
Now, you're opening yourself up to quasi-terrorism by letting them know where this stuff is.
Well, you, you have that issue, um, too, but you have to have an email address in order to be able to access this. And so, if we would have to have something that everybody knew, and everybody could get into.
Since November, the EP is strict on any access.
I just think that this is something we could, we could make hay with, is from, from the public point of view, and let them know that this is the technology that the city's using, even if we don't have, it'll give them access to it. I, I'm looking at the water thing, and the more we can do positive up until the time we unleash that information, the better off we're gonna be.
Oh, yeah, so we got diamond maps capability now, do you know?
Yeah, online, yes.
I, I, oh, you know, I can go on property pressure, and they got a aerial photo, and I see the whole county, and I can find the legal, I can do some things, and I can go, I'm a friend, or if, uh, people say, I, I, I write a book on my law.
It's not hard to find this information, if they wanted to find the information out there, but it's just not suggested that you make it easy.
Well, enough said, then, I'll, I'll take that, take you at your word. Uh, again, I'm just, I'm just looking for real good stuff we can put out there before we have to tell them that the water bill's going up.
Yeah, that's right, now, it, there could be, you know, you could create maps and could, uh, different things like that, for them to see, if you wanna get, like, where the valves or where the hydrants are, things like that, that wouldn't be as, uh.
From an ISO insurance.
But not where your, where your wells are at, that would be a place that you wouldn't.
But from an ISO insurance rate point of view, letting them know where the hydrants are, uh, with a little bit of a graphic or something, that.
And we can put it on the website, so they've got click on map that can be manipulated.
There is, there is the ca, you do have the capability to share with the link, to be able to share that with someone. Now, it's only gonna stay there for seven days, they only have that link capability for seven days, but it is something that you could refresh, you know, however often, and put it out there.
I think it's seven days.
Or, like I said, you could print the map itself and put it out there. I'll double-check to see if there's, um, if there's a way that they could access, that I, they would have everything, it's on the.
Do you have Mr. Google?
I don't think so.
We, we, we handle the public relations for the, for the town.
Okay.
Is it all right with everybody that if the two of them, and Mr. Google can speak for us in terms of what he can put on our webpage and things like that, that's all right? That's what they do for you.
Well, I certainly respect, um, where you're coming from as far as limited access, but again, all I'm looking for is to enhance your, your visual optics, um, between now and the time that we have to raise the rates thirty-three percent.
Yeah, I think we have to backplay.
If he, if, if the two of you communicate, that'd be great.
Okay, yeah, I'll give you my card, we can do that. And I'll give you mine.
All right.
Okay, anything else for Mrs. Schooler? Well, thank you for coming again, and, uh, uh, I guess we'll take action on this in the next hour or so.
Sorry about that.
All right. Okay. All right, uh, that gets us to, uh, I bet you we're talking on it, that's, uh, that's your cue, I suppose.
Uh, yes. The budget is balanced, so I'll have to add the, the new water rates in there, so, you know. Uh, to balance it, you know, for the add, but, which, uh, the water will go from, what I predict, at two-hundred-six-thousand-six-seventy, two-fifty-eight-five-fifty. But that's, that's a little, most of the salaries have been taken out of water, um, because our, our software, uh, only allows us to pay out of one fund, so I put all salaries for the council, for the city employees, all into the general funds. Uh, the raises for, calculated three-point-two percent, which is, which is low, but that's what we need to do for this year. Uh, the council raises are calculated three-point-two percent. Uh, we started out, you know, during the year with one full-time maintenance employee and a twenty-eight-hour, uh, a week employee. Uh, we went to thirty hours during the middle of the year, now. Um, so we had to increase the salary for this year's, for two forty-hours outside employees, one twenty-eight-hour inside employee. And, and I have, uh, with permission from the council, put mine in for two eight-hours a day, sixteen hours a week, which I'll be cutting just five hours off of mine, you know, and I did that much at home, anyway, it's here. The legal city's insurance went from twenty-five-thousand-four-hundred-sixty-three dollars last year to thirty-four-thousand-two-hundred dollars, if you can talk about increases. That is because of our two new employees, our employees, our salaries went up, and because the firehouse gave us power for the million-dollar building that was. Retirement for new employees is eleven-point-nine-one percent.
Go back and address that, uh, for, for our new council people, that, uh, workers' compensation. Uh, and John, maybe, being from the insurance industry, he made the risk better, but workers' compensation, uh, they do, they.
Do a rating.
Do average lawsuits on the gap, and sometimes it takes about three years before it kicks in. The, if I understand what we, what we have, the workers' compensation went up because of the settlement with.
Three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar hit to our, which his settlement wasn't that much to him, but with the attorney fees and all that, we ended up with a little over three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in one workman's comp claim. And then the new building, you know, everything else is about the same, but, you know, and we added two new employees, which we, we needed those employees desperately. We need backup, COVID is telling us that we need backup. But the insurance is a major hit, you know, it's almost ten-thousand dollars a year.
I hate that we.
And nobody else would touch us.
I hate, we had a claim, but if we have a legitimate claim, and we have a legitimate payout, I hate that the attorney's hit it ten times as much as the.
Claim.
I don't know if he's, yeah, claim, I start saying victim, the, the, the claim. Sometimes it just costs us more. It's a little, a lot of folks say, that it's gonna cost us, it costs us more, it's, right? That costs us more to fight, somewhere it costs us more to fight, to adjust it. And that's how come we got so many claims that's been settled for twenty-five or fifty, or something like that, because.
And a lot of this is a matter of.
Because we don't want to pay three-hundred to the attorneys.
And that's, you know, it's ten-thousand a year, and that first small municipality, there was three or four municipalities in, when you, uh, look at our revenue share and all, um, that, they went back under their counties, simply because they had too many, uh, liabilities, you know, to make it, they, they dissolved and went back under the county, like City Grove.
Dissolve the city, dissolve the city, yeah.
There was, um, it's a funny city. It was on some of the memos I had, anyway.
So what does that do when they go back over underneath the county?
It takes our revenue share, our revenues from the state goes to the county then, and we hope to have.
And they provide all the services that we provide.
Like, for instance, I'm, this is a question, like, for instance, our, if we went, went under the county, they would be, uh, liable for any lawsuits or, or damage, I mean, or injuries, or it would all fall under the, under the county. Or, and, uh, you know, it's something.
Unless our, except for our building, that we own the property.
Okay, the building would still be.
Yeah, you know, we're contracted with the county now, our, the county provides us monies for our firefighters, you know.
Yeah.
Non- liability, and, uh, we could turn our workman's comp, we lease our, they pay, we pay, the county pays insurance on our trucks. They take it out of our draw, but we're insured through the county, which, because we can get a much better rate than insuring ourselves.
Yeah.
Uh, we pay our own workman's comp on our firemen, you know, uh, but that's, and it's very little.
It's fair enough, we, we would not pay that out of the draw that we get from.
We pay out of the draw, you know, and that could even hold the rate through there.
When they give us money because of our money, but in reality, the county's paying all these things, they just give us the money to do it for you. And if we were to dissolve and go back and meet some bounds and not be able to incorporate, then we wouldn't own that, because we don't exist anymore.
We wouldn't own the city hall, we wouldn't own the library.
City hall, we wouldn't own any of that.
So that would all.
We'd have to transfer our properties to the county.
If we, if we, if we, if we're in a city.
Okay, well, you know, if you don't have, I, I don't.
That's it, yeah.
Yeah. But now, what about the, the employees, if you have too many volunteer firefighters, they all covered under liability.
Yeah, we, we covered twenty.
Twenty?
Mm-hmm.
So we have that winning now?
We have, we have probably twenty more, we probably have more than that on our roster, but we covered, there's not gonna be twenty firemen from Wausau in any scene at any given time, you know.
Okay.
And that's something we'll discuss after, after the elections in the fire department, we'll have a meeting, you know, discuss with the fire, and get an accurate number of firemen that we have and all that.
Okay, I, I just, just add, I didn't know.
Retirement for employees is eleven-point-nine-one percent, which you pay that on me, on Marcy, and on, uh, Tim. Dallas is a different, he's retired from the Florida retirement system under the Peachtree Plan. He can never go back into Florida retirement and get reinvested. The city pays five-point-nine percent to the state of Florida that goes wherever in that black hole over there, you know, for Dallas to work for us. But, you know. And, um, uh, elected official match is fifty-seven percent of your salary. As elected officials, except for Ms. Carter, who opted out of the Florida retirement, because she wasn't planning on staying with us as long, so. But anyway.
And it doesn't go away so much for the lady.
I figured I was just a one dark person.
It's a fifty-seven percent match for elected officials, which is good, you know, this is. It's a fifty-seven percent match for elected officials, which is good, you know, those is. This may be the last year that we get our money. Some have indicated they might do something, who knows? We don't know that. But, you know, we, we got to watch our speed in this year. We can't be frivolous as, you know, which we never are, because our fuel and operating expenses are up, utilities are up, our, our utility bills for just those wells is anywhere from a thousand to twelve hundred dollars a month, just for electric out there. So that's three wells and-
Our wells are a thousand dollars.
Yes, three, three wells and, uh, two wells and a booster pump is about a thousand dollars a mile.
Each?
No, that's-
All together?
All together, all together. And, you know, it's always the grants make us look good, and, but we still got our, and the grants that we're doing now, we've got the fire grants going, we'll have repairs and maintenance on that from now on forever and ever, I mean. But these, uh, these, these bridge replacements that we're doing, the well, that, that grant there to refurb that well with a new generator and, uh, new, uh, piping and new submersible pump, we did for thirty years or more there, you know, we don't have, we don't have a lot of operating expenses today, you know. Um, on the salaries, uh, the council is going up at three point two percent, the council is currently at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars a month. We're going to a hundred and seventy-five, you know, you don't have that pay just. The clerk from eighteen eighty-eight five an hour to nineteen forty-five per hour, utility bill for is fourteen dollars. This will remain the same for a probationary period. Six months from now, we may not have to worry about that. We may have to borrow somebody else's fourteen dollars an hour. I hope not, she's doing really well. Maintenance is fifteen forty-five to fifteen ninety-five now, uh, maintenance, Dallas is from fourteen to fourteen seventy per hour. Dallas is sort of limited on what he wants to earn because of his pension plan and, and his, his, uh, draw lines and that, they can't, you know. So that's where we're at.
That's, uh, so that we all know, so that we all know, uh, what it says, uh, employees are calculated three point two percent. You haven't seen that in years past, uh, probably none of you, some of the board has never seen that. I came back on the board, I think in ninety-eight or ninety-eight or ninety-nine, something like that. Uh, yeah, I believe, then I was off for, uh, one year because when I came to my retirement county, I had to, I had to be absent from the FRS for, for this year. Then I come back on in the electoral. So, so there has not been a raise, help me please, there's not been a raise in the council salary in that period of time from ninety-eight until now.
That's correct.
That I recall.
Yes.
Uh, before that, there was probably two or twelve years between-
Well, y'all went, y'all had, when I started here, y'all were a hundred and fifty dollars a month or something like that, if you want, over the past twenty-six years, you were a hundred and sixty-eight.
Twenty-six years ago, that's right. And, uh, and, and, and I don't see us making a thousand dollars a month, I don't see us making a million dollars, but, but this is, and we asked the attorney, could we, could we do this? And again, we're not trying to keep anything from anybody, but, uh, sometimes I would want to attract more participants in the electoral thing. Right now, those of us in front, we don't want to attract anything.
We don't need that.
But, but we will come to a, we will be like Ms. Carter said, whether we have one term or six terms, we'll come to a place where we're not serving it because we choose or because someone else has chosen by the people. And, and there is, that's not a whole loss for what we're called on to do, what we're called to, at least, just that this year. I think when we went from one fifty to what we're at now, I made a suggestion that time to, I hate being on one, whoever does that because we're done.
Not this Yale was right there reading that.
Yep, uh, the Yale was, Yale was very supportive, but if there's a question about that, you don't think we need it, that's okay, we may, I, I mean, we're not, depends on if it's for our lives or anything like that, but, seven dollars a month raise, uh, it, we'll, we'll be about five or six times in these six or eight weeks in September, no, uh, oh, it was in September. If it's worth, if it's worth anything at all to us, I think it's worth that, so. That's, that's only as good as if we boot that budget there while that does not stay there, if we think that needs to come out.
That's in the budget proposed.
Yes, sir.
Okay, got you, got you. But I want you to know, since, since we've never had a raise, since none of you have ever had a raise. That's, that's what, that's, that's how that arrived, that. Back to Ms. Stewart, uh, and, and that draft, charge are not so hard to read, but, uh, how does, uh, the, uh, the deficit out there in year four and five, she says that's going to be our capital outlay. Is, is that, is that a sup, a, a supposition or?
Yeah, out there, unless it's something you don't, you don't.
We may have a capital outlay next year, or we may not have another one in ten years, once the license we had has been, well, I guess the worst line replacement.
In two thousand and eleven, yeah.
Two thousand and ten, so it's been, it's been ten years, been eleven years since we had one full layout. I think we need reserves, uh, I think after this year that it's going to be okay and, 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 and I'll vote for this year, I mean, we-
Yeah, that, you know, after this year, it's going to go through a five percent increase, you know, and we can handle that.
Does she consent, does she consider the amount we were talking, is this on top of what we're doing or is this going to replace what we're doing?
Replace what we're doing.
So what do we do with that resolution, with that ordinance request? We have to make-
Now, we don't because it's, uh, our resolution says, we, the council will increase each year a minimum of three percent, of, of sixty. Yeah, it doesn't say, uh, if we can, we can't do more or anything else, we just have to increase the minimum.
So this complements that, unless, unless it's two, five, six, seven percent.
And we did it that way, I think, when that was, uh, when, uh, who's the judge rather, that we had this? Who's the lawyer we had this, the judge?
Jeff Goodman.
No, uh, for him.
Who he, who is, uh?
Not proper, but what was his name? Anyway, he done that resolution for us that way where we could increase without going back and doing a ordinance every time we needed to, to do. Our name for it.
If they can't, if they can't adjudicate.
Chris Patterson?
Who?
Chris Patterson?
No, he served.
We thought he would never make it.
Hey, hey, you did twelve years of state.
I did.
Oh, it was a compromise, I, 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 uh, we'll see. Anyway, I wouldn't wait.
Mallory?
Tim, Tim something, Tim.
Campbell.
Tim Campbell.
Campbell.
It's Tim Campbell now. He's made a very good judge.
He has, and I met originally, he's the neighbor, one of our church members, who's wife just passed, and I met him again. He's just enjoying being a judge, the best in the world. Okay, we've got the, uh, uh, we've had the recap. Is there a page or pages that we can go over and ask a question about in line item?
Those things changed, anything mostly that's changed is, uh, you know, the salaries, and it's just reflected in the general funds. Uh, we're going to pay Dallas, uh, mostly, uh, out of general funds, but we will transfer a few, uh, hours at the end of the last quarter for him to begin coming out of water, just to make it balance, you know.
I met with Morgan earlier so we could make the presentation together, maybe ask any questions that you had, so let me share what I, I heard about. One thing that's, that, that I was concerned with, uh, from the beginning, realizing that, uh, I've never seen, I've never seen money become available from as many sources as what's happened in the last four, five years, whether it was COVID or not. Basically, there's been money from almost every agency, whether it's agriculture, D P, D O E, it's gone and on, everybody's had some, some money for something. And we're getting, we're, we're probably getting better, our share of it than maybe we have in some other times. But then we, on top of that, at least our, our George Mercer Rogers part, uh, for a hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And to begin with, to begin with, I asked, we keep that in reserve, not, not spending. And we have spent close to thirty-five thousand dollars of it. Some of it, uh, I think part of the council was not aware of, uh, some of it was because of directions given to Morgan and she not knowing not to, but, uh, when these grants go away, if we keep two employees, if we add employees, if we do things to the building, do, we, we need reserves. If this money doesn't, if this money doesn't build us reserves from the, we have to do something to the well, we have to do something to the streets and all that. I'd like to see, I'd like to really see that money play someplace and any, any other revenue we have that goes over at the end of the year that we don't need to balance the next year and the next year and all, I'll pay. I'd like to see put in interest-bearing account, and that is, is, that's in an interest-bearing account, so that, that's good. I'd like to see that money be there. She said we needed ninety days. Uh, it took nearly, it took, in some places, it probably took close to ninety days to just get the lights back on after Mike away with places that didn't have electricity and water for, you know, if, if it had just occurred about most more, that could have been us, so. I, I, ninety days is not a loss, not a loss of cushion, loss of reserve, and I, I'd like to see us do something about that then. I also like to see us, there's going to be a change. If this is workshop, can, can we talk about things I know we can't lose? I'd also like to see us have a good, good change, and, and I think that it's, I think that it's on both sides now. Uh, when our fire department, uh, elections take place, I got a call from Mr. Rudd Monday, and he told me that I could say this to the council. He's not going to, uh, stand for election again as the chief. He may stay on and do some training, may stay on and, uh, drive a truck or something like that. He says, I can't go and burn a building, I can't run around the house, I can't do a lot of things. His health is still not good, his, his personal life is, uh, needing some, needing some ending and some things like that. He, he said that we could say this, he's not going to be, he's not going to continue to chief after the election. The fire department, my opinion, no one has to agree with my opinion, but my opinion is the fire department belongs to the city. That's a, that's what we represent. And, uh, communications, uh, lots of things over the last few years has, has cost us money, it's cost us goodwill. I don't think it's cost us any friendships, but it has strained some. And, uh, my opinion is the best way not to have a misunderstanding is to have an understanding. I've been very impressed, maybe, maybe even surprised, but, uh, the work that Adam has done and, and, uh, the intensity that he's put into what he's done and some things like that, but I've told him, whomever the chief is, if that includes even he, that, uh, that, that we thought, that I thought there were some changes. He did not disagree with that. So, how, what's, what's the opinion of the council? If, if that fire department ran goosebumps, here's where, here's where goosebumps at, if anything else, uh, fire. If we've got people who, and we have had, and we've had pictorial evidence of it, we have had people on the scene in t-shirts and so on like that, not turned out in buck of gear, not wearing coats and things like that, if that goes on, that stops here, there, any insurance claim, that, that stops here. And, uh, I don't want to tell them who drives the truck, I don't want to tell them who pulls the hose, I, I don't know that stuff, that's not something I know, but, uh, when we have a workshop and we ask for a report, I do want you to tell me, have people, people's on the roster? What's their level of training? How many of us went to a fire? Why do we have forty people on the roster and we have three people that goes to a fire and, and things like that?
My opinion is we should have a workshop with the active members of the fire department to let them know what we'd said. I have a very tough time doing a quarterly reports, because I don't get minutes, I don't know how many set the meeting, and I'm not fixing to step up and go to their meetings, slice them up. But we should have minutes from those meetings that tells me this meeting was here, this is what we did, and if we trained, this is what we trained on and having to train.
Our ministers, in my opinion, again, our ministers have been very, very lacking.
We have had none.
They need a new secretary.
Sure, them.
They need a new secretary.
You're exactly right.
Yeah, you're right. That's why they need to be taught too.
And you were the liaison, I, I jumped in and started and I, and I-
Are you doing all right? I agree with you.
I don't, well, I, I should have, without, if I could do it without, but I think in some sense, I should have asked you to speak to it or to you.
Sam called you, not me. Sam called you, not me.
I understand. And I don't, and I don't know if he did that because I was later, or he did that because of us working together for so many years. For now, going back, Johnny was a great chief, but Johnny was hard to tell anything. Johnny was a great chief. He never went to a D C F A meeting the whole time he was here. He's insane. He was the assistant chief, Johnny, Johnny was the chief. The standards have changed so much. And the office out here will tell you, and again, our funding, and we can't lose fifty-one things funded. And, and replacing the city managed to keep that place open over there. And, and our funding can be affected by this, and they will tell you that the reports don't come in, they beg for them, they call for them, they, all kinds of things. They would, they would, if they would tell me anything, and I can't speak with them, and, and if they told me something that, uh, would be in a confidence, and, and I'm not using names, but if it was in confidence, they didn't say that, but, uh, when they say that, uh, you'd be better off to send somebody to our meetings and do's going, that, that troubles me, that bothers me. So, uh, those are a couple of things that I think as we get into the, uh-
It just feels like that they don't work with the city. They don't, you know. How do, I mean, whenever we have a meeting and we ask them to come and they don't show up, I mean, how do you fix that or how? How do you, what do you do to get everybody to work together?
I would depend on the chief to be the chief and to bring his-
The Indians under control.
I see, the Ragged Indians under control.
Yes, he does want to be.
Well, what, what, you, let me ask you this now. See, I'm, I'm, I'm asking questions, but what does it, what does, uh, they, they not pay him, right? Is that correct? That's all about territory, right? Even the chief had followed territory, right?
Yeah, he's per se a city employee though.
Yeah, he, he's an employee, he's an-
He answers to the council directly.
And that, that kind of, we maybe we can look at our, we maybe we can look at our, uh, ordinance there and, or get Mr. Carter to, because the ordinance makes him an employee, yet he's, he's not paid and we don't choose him. The fire department chooses him and we ratify, if he's an employee, we would be involved in the hiring.
Well, now, Adam, he works, he got a job, he works out of town, right?
No, he's, he works at home.
He works out of home, okay, excuse me.
He's changed jobs recently, he, he was out of town, he picked two months off of his children.
Okay, okay.
And we've got it, we've got, uh, our fire department's got a, I think, the reputation, I, I think the local one we did over the other day is-
Yeah?
Was a little, less than I expected, but it was good.
I think it was good.
The weather was a lot of a factor, and it'd be all that back.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Adam seems to be, he seems to be good. I mean, that, that's my, that's my personal, but I, I don't know, I mean, you know. I ain't had too much dinner.
And you know, it may, it may, and, and I'd like for it to, it may take care of itself. I don't know.
I think it'll get better.
I don't know many things that ever has healed itself, but it, it may.
Yeah.
Get better. Also, while we're in workshop and we can discuss this in, in more length later on, uh, again, uh, at our open house Saturday, I was approached about, does the county have a code enforcement officer yet? Do they, they do anything about? We still got, we still got some properties that has been turned in to have some code enforcement activity on. And, uh, has, I, I told you earlier today, I seldom get calls from people in the, in the town that is complaining or wanting some things or all that. Uh, if I do, I usually- And when I do, I usually invite them to come here, but I've got a couple of calls about, well, actually, out here, out, some code enforcement still on some of our properties that haven't been cleaned up by our order. And about people that may be living on property and getting order off of an existing meter and, and don't have a meter for themselves or living in. Am I the only one that got that call?
I didn't get it.
Your hand got it, that's clear.
And I did, I did like to ask a chance around, best second term, we have possibly two that are, I mean, in RVs that don't have their own meter.
There's, there's a provision, there's a provision someplace that you can live in an RV if you're building or if you've got a period of time, and then you can get an extension for that and even all that. I guess, yes, it bothers me that, that people will try to go around, they can come here and get, get that. And if they are getting order off an existing meter, somebody's paid for that. I mean, we're not losing.
We're not losing the money.
Not losing any revenue, the only revenue that they also was putting it in. And the happy day that we take our men, put it in, they might can do something else. So it's not like, I think that's a, but.
So as far as when we talked about RVs, a lot of that, for them not to be able to, you know, have it as their residential.
It's my understanding, they can stay there for ninety days, they can go wait for the weekend and come back, as long as it all this is their permanent residence, that they can stay there. And that, that circumbit that, but you know, I haven't got that confirmed from the county yet. County's been in meetings all week too, so I haven't got much, you know, to have extra meetings this week.
Yeah. Are you addressing the dog?
Yes.
If you, if you, I'd like for her to sit there, if, 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 if they're there for, and I know that, I know that in the county, I've been on the planning board, I know that in the county you can like give permission to do a temporary, while you're under construction. If you're building a house, you can, you can do something, you got to, if you're self-contained or have a self-activity, I don't know. But if, if it's all right with everybody, and discussing the workshop, I would. Be a little more of a meeting, which I would say, thank you, I won't say a meeting.
I'll discuss it with John further and have something like, yeah, I'll tell you when you need it.
Please. Was there anything, I, I kind of got away from.
No, everything is the best.
The many thing, what do you need, what, what do we need to do to protect that many or any other unobligated many?
Look, if any of the unobligated many, we can put into a reserve account. Yeah, we have a reserve account for the USDA, we have a reserve account for the fire department now, the, you know, USDA law arbiter. We have a reserve, we have savings accounts, you know, we have CDs, we put into those periodically, you know, and we'll proceed to do that.
We have a good reserve. Just all pile up, total up pretty.
It's fair, yes.
Fair, okay. Well, I hope, definitely, I hope we set a reserve account.
I, I'd like to see, when we get in our meeting, if we all feel this way, we can, we can have a motion to. I'd like to see us, that seventy-five thousand dollars, whatever it is that it is, or just take seventy-five thousand out of what's left or whatever, that was a portion of the amount. But I'd like to see that put up and that it could be spent unless that's been approved by the council and we vote on it.
You told them about a certain figure.
Yeah.
Could we go about.
This is the tower money.
This is that, this is that tower money, we put it up. And we just act like a disclaimer, unless we all decide whether this is a number or say we need to go into that account and paper, or if we don't have someplace else. Anything else is in general fund, water fund, street fund.
Those are all basically the same as they got been.
Margaret's got expenditure authority, she can spend out of that, so that we can spend, we can spend from that budget if that budget has that many in it. And then there may be things we have to have, that we have to go into that money. That, that's why we leased or sold our rights or. Are we still in the workshop?
I work there.
Okay, what, anything you have to do on that? We didn't do it.
Everything is the same as last, we're signing up standard here, just, you know, just going to use them from a solid.
Okay. Hey. Can we adjourn this workshop, please?
I got one question. So, if our department's going to let you choose this.
In October.
In October, okay. That's all I have.
Did we, is Sheriff Cameron?
Yes, sir, we've been, it's been a lot of, it's been our, some of our miscellaneous expenses.
We stand adjourned from the, from the workshop. Just keep saying one.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I have a couple of meetings to say, Councilwoman, would you please send an indication in the main standing for state officials, so the flag behind Mr. Horace can have. Our God, thank you for this day and the opportunity to serve the town of Wausau. Thank you for your blessings on our community. Thank you for the wonderful day that we had on Saturday and the new additions we've been able to present to our community. We ask that those things that we do tonight would be in the best interest of those that we serve and all these things, we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. Please join with me, attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which the citizens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn this back on. Everyone has your microphones, please, attached and contact. All right, has everyone had an opportunity to look at your agenda, your minutes, and all the attached documentation? Is there any additions or deletions or corrections to be made to the agenda? Okay, Sheriff and Payne, motion two, this is, we have to have that over here before we begin?
You don't even have to cover here to ask to input on the budget.
Okay, we, we don't have to have that first, though. We do talk about the budget and then we have to. No, 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 we do that, we do that.
Get any public input out there for the.
We, we need to do that before we begin. All right, we'll resist the meeting, the regular meeting, and we will open the public hearing for the fiscal year budget two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. Is there anyone in the public that would like to address our budget? Have any questions about our budget? We have a balanced budget presented to us by the clerk.
Yeah, the general funds is balanced at two hundred and four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five. The water and garbage, two hundred and fifty-eight five three to twelve thousand one hundred and twenty. Recreation, twenty-eight four hundred. The volunteer fire, uh. Fire is fifty-one four, one forty. Volunteer fire is five thousand. We have two FERDA grants that are ongoing, that are in the, in the grants right now at fifty thousand each. So the budget is balanced.
That's phase two, the grants are phase two, the possible palace and the.
Ball field light.
Field light.
George Rogers.
George Rogers. I have one question or one comment on the street that's mostly carried forward, man. We're not, we're not adding much to our street fund year after year.
No, we're not. Right now, with our local gas is about ninety dollars a month, you know. It's very, they cut it, they cost some of the, everybody cutting the taxes for inflation and all that, when the gas prices went so high. When the county votes to cut the, and the governor says, you know, cut your gas tax, you know, by counties and municipalities, ours gets cut also. Our revenue sharing, you know, is up a little bit, we get a little more revenue sharing, you know. But we, and that's strictly, that, that has to be road repairs or whatever, you know.
The street funding budget that you see there, or that you, that you have, the twelve thousand one twenty, we give that in a distribution from, with other municipalities in the county, they submit. And that's only one cent off, right? And it comes to us, and we, we, we have to present how much expenditure we had in the last five years and how much of a percentage that is of all that we spent. And that's how much money we did. It's probably, it may be close to time for us to look for doing that again. And if we do get this street work behind us and the grant now, we won't say it this year, but in a couple of years, we may be able to call for a, a conference, a redistribution conference, and that amount might increase because we're going to spend, what's these grants for over here?
One point four million dollars.
One point four million dollars on roads, that'd be.
Plus three hundred and thirty-seven thousand here on.
So a million and a half dollars that we can spend in the next couple of years. We want to not forget that, because that, that would be a large part of all of the money to spend in the county, so we would, we should get an increase, so that's for that money.
And our street monies are down a little. Well, we did some infrastructure projects last year, you know, we're going to just, we done the, a cover project on Monroe Street, you know, that was several thousand dollars. We had to do some tree removal out of our alleys, you know.
Yep.
Those damaged by Michael, it was a danger falling out. We did some infrastructure projects that we don't normally do because we had some, we are, our money, as you know, that we added, but we had to supplement the street monies too.
And those monies, as many that you spend on the streets, it doesn't matter about the source of that money, so even though that would be grant money, we would still be spending that money because that grant was, was our money. Any, any questions on the council concerning the, concerning the budget? Do we leave anything in our floor?
Oh, yeah, we got it there.
We got, he's in here.
He's covered.
We funded it.
We funded it.
All right, all right. Any other questions? Sheriff, we entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion is our second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? I go with Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter?
Yeah.
Sheriff, she is. Close the public hearing to reopen our regular council meeting. Again, you've had an opportunity to review the agenda, any additions, corrections, or deletions that we need to make?
I need to, I need to delete.
Okay.
The request from the Wausau Community Development Club.
Okay.
They, that's about their buildings, so they've gone another route, so they're writing that back if they need it. And I need to add to surplus, Vicavoda backhoe and the cat backhoe. The Washington County transferred the cat backhoe to Wausau, took it off their property list because when we put it on ours, those are surplus alleys, we need to, I'll discuss that when we get out because we need a motion to take it to auction.
All right.
And I also need to discuss the, George Rogers Park, FERDA grant, just briefly.
Okay, all right.
That's it.
We both deletions, what's the pleasure concerning the agenda?
I make a motion to a separate agenda.
Okay, so, okay. Just for discussion, does that include adopting the consent agenda, then picking up with Adam Seacham clerk?
Yes.
Those things have to be discussed from their name, can we do that, Ms. Carter? That includes the consent, the consent agenda, which is our minutes, our statements and those things. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? I go with Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
That's what's now.
Yes.
Sheriff, she is, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
I'm at a court.
Okay, frustrating, as you said, as we talked about, we have balanced the budget with a thirty-five percent increase in the water, which is, it's going to hurt, it's, it's a, I have to.
Is that going to be at one time or pro-rated?
Every one time, be eleven, every round eleven dollars a month. For you, going to be around eleven dollars a month that you'll pay each, not extra. Beginning in, when you get your bill in November. Does that be for this business for you?
But that thirty-five percent is just for one?
One year, one year only, then it'll go to five percent.
Okay.
Okay.
That's five percent, that's not five percent R C P I, is it?
Five, they're saying it'll be R C P I, because the C P I may go above or below five percent, but it's going to be things going, but leveled out at about five percent.
So, so, and adopting the budget, do we need to adopt this document that has that order of survey in separately?
No, it's just.
Or if we adopt the budget, it includes.
We've already adopted that asset management plan, but I just want this attached, we can add that if it won't be.
Do we have to adopt it, should we have to? If we adopt the budget, do we adopt the ratings? We don't have to go separate?
No.
Is that good that everybody, that Ms. Carter's said? All right, is there any, any discussion in the public meeting now concerning the adoption? We just had a public hearing, have no comments, is there any comments now as a part of the meeting? We're fixing to vote on it now. Okay, Sheriff, we entertain a motion to adopt the fiscal year budget. Do we need to read that resolution first?
Order first. I can read it by title, then we'll adopt it.
Okay, would you please?
Orders number twenty-two-two dash oh-one, an order to adopt the budget for the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three for the town of Wausau, Florida, and re-proprecating the funds for said fiscal year.
Okay, all right. If you make a motion, the motion will be that we adopt the ordinance that she just read and that we will advertise. Final adoption of the budget itself will be in a subsequent meeting.
September twenty-nine.
September twenty-nine. So, so, quite as the pleasure. We tend to approve the budget tonight and advertise it.
That's right, yeah.
Now, at the, so that we, so that we understand, at the final budget, we can reduce things. We cannot increase things. So if there's anything you want to increase tonight, change, or put more money in one line and take it from another line, I guess, we have to do that now. Once we advertise this ordinance, the only thing we can do is reduce. Okay, all right, what's the pleasure, council?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion that we, that we advertise ordinance number twenty-two-two dash one, adopting a fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three budget, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, I go with Ms. West?
Yes.
Sheriff, she is, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter, yes.
Okay, we have got some good news. This will be for fiscal year twenty-two-four, but our Jackson Street and Jefferson Street, which is the cat lot behind the town hall this street, and Jefferson Street behind the Tompano, we have got funds awarded to the small county outreach program, the SCOT program, for paving those roads, if I'm interested, I have, but we, we've been awarding those. We will not get a contract on those until twenty-twenty, after July of twenty-two-three, for twenty-two-three, twenty-two-four fiscal year.
And that will run from Fourth Street to, across the side of Mission Street, I think, Street.
Glinen.
Glinen, on Jackson, and it will run from.
Sixth Avenue.
Sixth Avenue to Buster Rogers.
At least that far.
Avenue, that. And because this is, the time off, I'm sure the engineer is going to have to be done. I would really like for us to see that the engineer include where we expand these to more than ten feet wide. We've got this thing down here in front of your, well, this is.
Glinen.
Atlanta, and John will back over. It's, it's like a driveway, we get paved right down the middle of the roadway. We've got plenty of right of way, we've got sixty feet, and I'd like to see us pave and drain. And if there's drainage, that could be some drainage problem, I don't know about where you live for sure. I'd like to see us address all those drainage problems as well.
We'll let go Roger all the way past Buster Rogers' place to that road there, sort of behind David's.
We're not sure if that has already been closed or not. We're checking with property pressure on that. If it does, it will go to the, it's gonna be a buyout, you know, through that, through there.
And because there's a curve there, if it does, and I would, I would still recommend that we, if we can, all the cities.
Yeah, make our.
Property there to take it in there where you talked about, because that, uh, having those two intersections that close together out on seventy-seven is, uh, is, is, that's something. Okay, that is good news. Go ahead.
Okay, well, the, you have the attachment for the rural order that, you know, she's done the rate increase. We're down on the maps now. We're moving forward with our water system, and I think within the next few years, we'll be back in good shape again with it. Uh, and that goes along with, you know, our grant for, uh, you know, doing the submersible pump at the well, the new piping at the well, the generator at the well, you know, we're behind times at our well, but we're gonna be coming to the future with it. Okay, D E O, we all met with D E O this afternoon, Roger and I and Billy did. Uh, they come to do a site visit on our Coral Lane and their drive roads. What's, what they told us today, and Roger can verify, that once they come for this site visit, you know, we most likely gonna get our funding unless something drastic happens. And I don't think they've seen anything out there that would majorly change their opinion that these roads are in. In fact, a guy told us that they had a good case to present to HUD. But, uh, it'll be in the next few months, you know, that we'll get notification if we get funding. We can apply for one point four four million, four hundred and forty-four thousand dollars out there, we'll need it for. Uh, asphalt is going up in that time, you know, we may have to make some cuts, but maybe it'll go down.
And they actually said that sometime, they said they didn't, they usually did not make a site visit unless we scored, uh, high enough that it was, uh, a better than even chance it would have been funded. He said, even when they come out to the site visit, that there are times that they raise our score because the road is really worse than what we made it, uh, appear.
We got to tell them.
And if there's any road, if there's any road that's gonna be worse than what we made it appear, it's gonna be Coral Lane. Uh, Owen is, is bad, it's really bad right about for Mr. Clark Ligos on, on that, uh, east side.
Yeah.
But they talked about that our score could even go up, which would make us even a better chance of being funded.
Okay, um, then that's, uh, I need a vote to surplus the Cabota backhoe and the Cat backhoe, uh, and send to auction. The county gave us talk to the Cat backhoe, or a dozen to go out there and say, we could have any monies that it might bring in this auction.
Okay, what's the pleasure, Council?
I'll make the motion, we go here and we'll send that to auction.
Okay, I got a motion for a second.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Ms. Wolfenham?
No. Uh, yes, yes.
I mean, but no question, yes, yes. Sheriff, she is, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, George Marshall Rogers Park, we have got funding out of fifty thousand dollars, and we've got to light that ball field, put some bleachers out there, do some renovations, which is ready to be needed on the bathrooms and the concession stand out there, paint the, uh, uh, shuffleboard court and add some playground equipment. And obviously he was here because I don't like to talk when he's not here. He's, we are not in the timeline.
Budget map form?
Oh, I hear. We're in a crunch on the timeline now that, uh, we are down to work. I don't think that we have time to cut that ball field down to revamp the whole thing out there to make a football field. But we have, you know, we barely got two soccer teams. We're gonna build a new tee ball field at George Rogers' park, I mean, Fossum Palace Park. But I just need a direction to go with Steve, and it might be good to get him here. You know, he really wants this football field, he really wants this, but it's gonna be over our fifty thousand dollars, I'm sure, to light that ball field and to get a piece, to turn a piece of equipment from up and, and get that hill level down to, you know, we're not gonna have the funds to do it this time. And we're making a plot for a second grant when we close these out and make us a football field there. But I just don't think it's gonna happen this time. Our N R D, I think it's needed at this time.
Tim, Tim asked me about it. I didn't know what Steve is playing, but Tim asked me about it, uh, uh, this morning. I saw him out here on the, uh, cleaning up around, that he, that Steve wanted to take down the fence and do some things like that. I believe that fence is up as part of the original grant and it did more to our profit lines, I think.
The boundary, he's talking about the fence around the ball field, I think.
He's not talking about the boundary.
I hope, I hope not.
Okay, because I, I don't think we need to be taking any boundaries down.
No, we don't.
And the fence around the ball field, that was actually part of the, the original grant. Not that it can't, I think it could be moved, but I agree more with, I think the larger field now at, uh, Fossum Paddis, there's plenty big for a football field. Uh, we already got lights down there and things like that. We're not gonna have, we don't have winter softball and little league games and things like that. I think we play football in here. I don't think we need to get into trying to upset anything of how, what we, what we got turned in and got going, I think.
We got till April to close this grant out, so.
So, so we're not gonna have a lot of time to do lots of other stuff. I, my, my opinion is we stay with what we doing, but the council.
What can we do with that other money? With that, I mean, is there grant, use a grant money?
This is a grant, for George Rogers' park, we got fifty thousand dollars. Of that, we got about thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Do we have to use it over there?
Yes.
Yeah, well, there won't be any money. He's, he's wanting to do it within that fifty thousand.
And there's not money for that.
There won't be any money left over. What he, what he would be asking next, we probably have to come up with additional money.
We don't, we don't.
Lot of it.
And we don't have additional.
We're begging the power company now to come set those poles and lights for us where we don't have that expense, you know? City of Chickamaui donated us the lights for the ball field. We're not sure if they work, but we think they do. Um, so, you know, we may have to buy lights, you know, we may have to buy three lights and put them out there. Right now we have a bunch of them.
I just don't see football growing in Wausau at this immediate time.
We don't have the kids.
No, we, we don't, you know, you know, that's, I, I don't, I don't, it won't happen in the next few years. They, it just, to me, it won't. I mean, I'm just stating my opinion, you know, it's, you get, you get softball and baseball and even soccer ain't going good. I mean, it's gone, but it ain't going good. But you get, you, you can get softball and baseball and that, and we, we prepared for it to a certain degree down there. So maybe we gotta do something with the dugouts, you know?
We're building new dugouts.
Yeah, but anyway, football new, I don't think, I, I hope I proved wrong, okay? I, I, I honestly, I, well, I was wrong, but I don't see that happening.
I knew they go down there and use that as the skate park and stuff, but what could you actually put over there besides building? Something like, you know, maybe.
We're hoping, we're hoping to utilize, if we get it lighting, utilize it for some of the baseball teams. They could practice there, they could play games there. We're gonna, we've got to get bleachers in the grant, you know, and all that. We're gonna put bleachers out there, we're gonna, we're gonna have the concession stand. We're gonna do a lot out there with this grant, but we don't have the money to cut that hillside down and make, and we still, according to Firdout, our Firdout, we still have to have a baseball field there because that was originally, for twenty-five, twenty-five years from now, we're making, scratch it all and put a bogging out there or something.
Oh, it's just like, didn't you, yeah?
I agree with, uh, John about football. This town's not big enough.
And even if you have any, we don't want kind of problems up with our umpires and our thing on, yeah, you got to have a, a contingency.
More liability.
And they have, and they are, they're, those are, those are papers recently, like, yeah, talking about your budget, so it's a budget. No disrespect to your dad, for whom we named the park, but that is.
No.
That is a rent, that is a rent we never should have. There, it's, uh, just too far removed, too little.
That's why I was wondering, that's why I was like, what do you, you know, what could be put out there?
If we had it to do over, we would have put a huge skate park out there, you know? That is really wrong, because our skate park is really used.
And, and we'll, we'll grow it into later. Uh, at the time we got it, it is, at this point in time, has mostly been more investment than had been returned.
Mm-huh.
But, but we'll grow it into an avenue. Okay, so is the consensus, uh, that we continue to, should we make a motion on this?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, we need to make a motion, uh, that, uh, if I to be instructed to stick with the original grant as it is and follow that, so it's not going to be any advances or a football.
I will then make a motion to.
Okay, we have a motion, is our second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Sheriff, both I, Ms. Carter?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Ms. West?
Yes.
Yes.
That's all I have.
Uh, just one more thing?
We don't be here since three, you know?
All right, Ms. Carter?
We've been here since one.
Do you have anything for the?
I don't have anything.
Don't have anything tonight, okay? Ms. Wolfenham?
No.
Ms. Carter?
No.
Uh, Ms. West? Okay. In Congress, they would say I yield my time, so if you will excuse me here time, I will be, I will be brief. Uh, I want to tell you about a transportation meeting we had yesterday. Uh, I was probably a little disappointed in what I thought I was going to hear, but there was maybe a negative or two there. Uh, the Emerald Coast or the former, formerly the, uh, Westport Planning, recent planning council, Washington County, and the counties within the council on that northern tier. You have, you have the Bay County, Michigan Transportation Organization, you got one for the, for Walton, and you've got one called the, uh, Florida Alabama, that takes the Skim County, San Luis, one and a half of it, along the beaches recovery. But they're trying to do transportation planning, long learn, long term transportation planning, Highway eighty-one, Highway eighty-five, three thirty-one, seventy-nine, seventy-seven, all of these that run through the Panhandle and go into Alabama, and that's not that. We're full leaning in our county, seventy-seven, seventy-nine, that's ongoing. But they're trying to coordinate so that cities and counties, uh, so the D O T can look at their funding, perhaps increase their funding or redistribute their funding and things like that. Uh, we took a copy of all the, uh, rents that we have going on and, and took them in. And I told Mr. Messi that I would call him back in a couple of weeks or something like that if he see one. But anything that we have related to transportation issues in Wausau, they would like to know. They put them on a plaque, they put them on a wish list, and if, uh, if money comes available here for a project this, this size, that they would match us, and we might, we might get it without even asking for it, it might be made aware of, and we have to go through the process and things like that. I asked them about landscaping and lighting, thinking about seventy-seven. Uh, the lady that made the presentation for the, uh, planning council said she thinks that lighting would probably be something they could include because it could be a safety issue. Didn't know so much about landscaping because the D O T already has a beautification unit, a, a division and thing like that. But we're gonna do something, we might do something there. So just to make you aware, I attended that meeting. They're probably going to ask for somebody to be appointed to meet quarterly or periodic or something like that, the representatives from Holmes and Northern, okay, they're doing some things in Paxton right now, three thirty-one goes up, uh, you know, goes into Florida Allen. So, uh, I, I was at that meeting. I didn't come away with anything that made me think that there was going to be, uh, any money available to us in Washington, Wausau, to pay or resurface anything in the next, uh, short while. But we may want to think about some of the streets. I know that at this point in time, Fourth Avenue and Monroe is still going to be dirt. It's still dirt. We may find some paving there for a short, for a short project. Uh, we probably have other streets, if we look at it, besides Jackson and Jefferson that needs to be widened, some surface, some shoulder work done, some new stripings, some new paving. Uh, I know at the end of, uh, Fourth Avenue down here, we're turning into Holy Road. It can be paved out maybe to the end of the city, uh, city limits. And to date, when we talked to them about, uh, Owen and Cora, uh, the, the county administrator, he did not commit a hundred percent, but he said that he would, they would immediately put the rest of the circle on their paving project so that it would be paved from seventy-seven, past Owen and Cora, and then continue until it comes back in, in here. That would be a really good thing for all of that residential area over there and, and it'd be a good cut off. So those were a couple of things. Uh, wanted to talk about the, the TM World Park and the fence. Uh, would it be okay with the council, not until after we get into a new budget year and until Marcy is a little old trained and, and, uh, Marcy comes up for air a little bit? But, uh, I understand the last thing we had on seventy-seven was that they're going to go and contract in March or April.
They don't stop the construction and, well, you're contracting March or April.
Construction in August.
May.
In May.
They're going to care about you totally, so they're starting May.
Okay, I thought we was told August, so.
I would like to be on the man's name.
So we're not, we're not far from having seventy-seven working started this year. The liaison has changed. So we're going to have, you know, what, for the longest time, we had this bar field and she was a local and all of that. Uh, I think I'd probably like to ask Marcy to schedule a meeting with our liaison, uh, if it's all right with you. And any of us can come, we won't be voting, uh, or anything like that, if I get into legal issues here. I think any of us could come in a fat fountain. We could ask questions, they could respond to us, we couldn't talk to each other. But I'd like for he or she maybe to come and talk to us and let's get a real update. We got water lines involved, we want, we, those water lines are going to be upgraded. One of the things that's on this, and I didn't say it to Ms. Stewart while I go, but one of the things that's on this plan that we got is that ten inch line. If we can get the, if we can get D O T to help us, and I know that's gonna be off the D O T right away, if we, for that project, we can get them for that ten inch line, or get it for that ten inch line from the way over out to seventy-seven. That's an expense we wouldn't have to have. And, and I'm pretty sure we can't get it if we don't ask for it. Not, don't, don't have any idea whether we can or cannot get it, but I'd like to meet with them and see if we can include that in the project. And, uh, would y'all like for Marcy to have a meeting so that we could meet one afternoon, October, November? I mean, I'm not talking about in the next few days or anything. We got to get a budget. Actually, we adopted, we got to get it delivered into the computer and get all that stuff going. Have I, have I described what you're doing correctly? And would, would any of you like to meet with D O T and see what, see what they said to us about seventy-seven?
I think it's next one.
I think we all need to.
Yeah, okay. Would you check your calendar in the next couple of three weeks and project something down there and make, coordinate with all of us? Something that we could do something like that? Okay, uh, and then the last thing that I have, and this probably is for Mr. Carter to help us with. We, uh, uh, we don't yet know if the county's got, uh, somebody to help us with, uh, with code enforcement. Uh, some of those things are not being seen about. It did come up Tuesday night at, uh, Monday night at the Washington County Penning Commission is that code enforcement, including, uh, code enforcement is everything. It only has been cleaning up trashy yard. It means, if you got your numbers up for nine one one, it means, uh, it means a lot of things. Uh, we have, we have some things, uh, we need, we need, and, and, and they may not do this for us. Marcy or Marcy or Tim or Dennis or somebody may have to do it, but if we have mobile homes that are not skirted, they've been here over thirty days or sixty days or every how long, whatever hour we're gonna sit, Marcy, if you remember off Tony Head?
Uh, ninety days.
Ninety days, if it hadn't been skirted, that's a code violation. Uh, if we got somebody that's, uh, not, uh, we talked about this in the budget, we're talking about.
Does that skirting include my porch? My trailer's skirted, my porch is not.
Uh.
ours neither.
All right, mine, mine's not even, I don't think, it's just the trailer. I think it's just the.
What's that? Good deal. What's not, Judy?
Well, I was gonna say, I think it's the box, but I didn't say anything because ours isn't, and, and if it's more than the box, then we need to do that too. But when the ordinance was not, I think it's just the box.
Okay.
Mine, mine is skirted, mine.
Yeah, mine is too, but, uh, and it hasn't been for forty years. But, uh, uh, But, uh, uh, the meter thing I mentioned a while ago, I lost my train of thought, I meant the meter thing I mentioned a while ago. We've got, uh, two or three people that's going off that meter. If that's a code violation, it needs to stop. If it isn't a code violation, we need to take it out of our, we need to take it out of our codes or whatever, so. Uh, properties is not getting cleaned up. I had, had an animal complain in a pretty good while.
We're doing a little bit of writing.
Yeah, I, I don't hear nothing about that.
Yeah, I had, had an animal complain a while, but, uh, one getting at it is that we have these numbers of sets of violations. And I'm wondering if when we get these, uh, I, I would thank Mr. Carter, he may say, start with Marcy. But I think we would need to say, uh, let's send a letter. Uh, dear, uh, resident, uh, uh, it's been brought to our attention that you perhaps have, uh, a second user hooked up to the meter and, uh, and that's in violation of city ordinance or city code or land development code, whatever city. Uh, would you please, uh, contact city hall at your earliest convenience and, uh, verify this, or let's see what we can do. Dear resident, we, uh, you, uh, whatever, I said.
My mom's skirted.
But if you, uh, you, uh, it's come to our attention that your local home is not skirted and violation of ordinance, so, so. Is that something that, is that something that, uh, has any merit, or is that something we need to do, or?
I think it's good reasonable notice to, kind of a, a good neighbor.
Yeah.
After between the town and the resident, before it gets turned over to the code enforcement officer up in Chipley.
Yeah, don't start out with a, don't start out with a big gun. Some of them may think because we're small, because we're rural, it's happening in the county, that we just don't have codes. Now, people coming here from Boston, other places, they lived on the codes all their life. They come in here and go right straight to the building department of the code enforcement to see what they got to do because they expect them to have to do it when they get here. Uh, the problems we have with the planning commission is not, is not people that's come here, it's just people that's, that's from here. And, uh, if that's something we've got, uh, connecting driveways. Uh, you, you can't just start driving across the ditch and, and onto official property because you're gonna walk that ditch, it's gonna create a water problem, wash out your road or something like that. And I think where we have places like, like any of these violations, the letter, and we'll act like we think they didn't know what they were doing. We don't start out accusing. We start out and saying, this may be going on, uh, we have an improper, we have, it just, you know, don't have to say that. That we think this might be going on, it's come to our attention that it could be going on, and, uh, so on. Is that, uh, could you, could you, it is a matter of, we can say, we don't even have to have a name. I don't care if Marcy signs it, you something, or just say town or so, but could you do some kind of a word, like letter that, and we feel in whatever violation it is?
Absolutely, absolutely. Would you give Mr. Marcy, put it in a word document? And maybe even, it, it could be a courtesy warning kind of thing, if this isn't correct, we'll refer this on to the county and code enforcement.
Do, do y'all think that's a good idea or not such a good idea, or?
The warning is a good idea.
I think, you know, too many times, when we're going through the dog, think about three or four years ago, too many times, we'd have to wait till somebody standing here in front of us with a scar on their leg or a dog with them, and before we do anything, I, I'd rather us be more proactive and, and, uh, and see if we can prevent that. Would we need a motion to?
Yes, sir, if you wouldn't mind.
Uh, if you think it's a good idea, the chair would entertain a motion that Mr.
Of course, I myself will know right now.
Wrapped us a letter, did kind of fill in the blank, whatever violation it is, or type in the blank or something like that. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Carter, yes. Ms. West?
Yes.
And she goes yes. That's all I have. Mr. Carter, turn.
I don't have anything, mayor.
Uh, y'all have? Well, look at here. I was in. Next time you come, be.
This is twice I've come.
This is twice.
I need to get my off cycle back, honestly.
This is twice you come and didn't have anything apart. But we're always.
I apologize.
We're always glad to see you.
Yes, sir, likewise.
Anything else from the council? At least note that the last time we was here was an hour, a long time, and we were out in forty minutes today. Good standing, turn.